Yeah, so I will call the meeting to order. Oh, and I don't have that extra, um, extra statement, so. Scott, is that extra statement on the board drive?
Oh, the, the, um, the, after the announcement, the public muting themselves and so on?
Yes.
Um, how about, how about I could read that right before the public, um, uh, the, the, um, public, uh, um, sorry, hold on, let me get my agenda here, decide where. Would you like me to read it for you? Or I could share it? I could share it on screen? Oh, no, I can't share it on screen. Sorry. Want me to read that for you?
Um, yeah, I'll have you read it for me.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Six thirty-four. One second. Gotta take notes and also preside. My name is Linda Ho. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was an act, was enacted to assure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Mr. Krieger, would you read the additional notice regarding remote meetings?
Yes, Linda, thank you. During this meeting, we ask that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If needed, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth issues and believe that limiting video could help, we may do so. We will have at least two public comment periods. If at that time that you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for us to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if we miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your actual hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately. In Harlan Park, this means no screaming, obscenities, or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted and we will come back to them at a later time. If the speaker is the final commenter at the final comment period, we will invite them to return at our next meeting. That's it, Linda.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger.
Thank you.
I'd like to introduce myself. For those who are not familiar with me, my name is Linda Hofela. I'm the school business administrator. This is our annual reorganization meeting. At this time, we do not have an officially seated president or vice president, and so I will preside at the beginning of this meeting until a board president and vice president are appointed. So I'm going to continue with the agenda until that time. At this, at this time, I'd like to invite everyone to say the pledge of allegiance. And Dr. Taylor has a flag. So if you would all join me, I appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to, to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that. Oh, springing. Okay. At this time, I would like to announce the results, the final election results for school board members. We had three, um, individuals, um, on the ballot for election, and they are incumbent members Anne Gowen, Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola, and Robert Roslevich. Anne Gowen received four thousand three hundred thirty-three votes. Michelle McFadden-Dina Cola received four thousand one hundred ninety-one votes. And Robert Roslevich received four thousand one hundred fifty-five votes. Mr. Roslevich is not here tonight and will be sworn in at a later time. Ms. Gowen and Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola, there is a copy of the oath for school board members on the board drive. If you could pull it up and access it and then repeat after me, I would appreciate it. Let me know when you're ready. And please unmute yourselves.
All right, I think I have it. Do you have it, Michelle? Could I, could we screen share with her? Let's see.
Yes.
Let me share this with Scott. Uh, let's see. I just shared the oath with you, Scott, on, uh, by text.
It's on the, yeah.
Got it.
Do you want to, would you mind screen sharing it for us both?
Nope, sure, I'll do it right now.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
All right, Michelle, the search is over, hopefully.
Yeah, it's all being on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, Anne, that's the code of ethics.
Oh, what?
I have, I have the oath. I got it. We're all good. Here we go, guys.
I have a bunch of stuff, but, uh, okay. Sorry.
All right, so, um, Ms. Gowen and Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola, if you could repeat after me, please. I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this.
Under authority of the people.
Under authority.
Under authority of the people. And I do affirm.
And I do affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law. For the office of a member of Board of Education.
For the office of a member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office accordingly, according to the best of my ability.
My ability.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense.
Listed in NJSA eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Listed in NJSA eighteen A colon twelve dash.
One. That's enough. Well, thank you and congratulations. Welcome back to the board.
Thank you.
I think there's a dog.
Thank you.
That was also sworn in.
It's not easy to do this remotely. Sort of like talking on a cell phone.
It's like right on time. He's chiming in.
Nice. So this is your third term, each of you, right?
Yes.
That's great. Really great, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'm going to take the roll call. Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Here.
Ms. Pruce?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich is absent. Mr. Woodward?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Um, Dr. Taylor, have Ms. Minton and Ms. Rotus been informed that the meeting was going to start at six thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll expect them shortly. Okay, um, at this time, it is time to elect, elect a new board president. Uh, I am going to ask for nominations. And so I will ask someone to move, uh, the nomination of an individual. I will ask if there are any other nominations at this time. If there are more than one nomination, we will take roll call on the first and then any subsequent after that. I would hope that if there are more than one, you would only vote yes for one of them. Um, so at this time, may I have a nomination for the position of board president?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Krieger.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Your Magaziner. Do I have any more nominations? Okay. At this time, I would like to take a roll call for the nomination of Mr. Krieger as board president. Ms. Simorusti?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Magaziner?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes, and thank you.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Krieger.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing that I forgot to mention, um, back to the oath of office. If, um, Ms. Gowen and Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola, if you could possibly print out the oath, there is a place at the bottom for you to sign. If you could sign it and email it to me, I will sign it, uh, and then I will return to you the fully executed copy. Okay.
No problem.
Thank you. Um, and now, Mr. Krieger, you may continue with the agenda, um, beginning with the election of the vice president.
Linda, thank you so much, and thank you fellow board members for your confidence in me. Um, this is, these are hard times. And I'll do, I'll do my best, as, as Anne and I did last year. So, um, so in the election of vice president, we need nominees, and I'd like to nominate Anne Gowen for vice president. I need a second, please. Do we have?
Again. Oh, okay.
There was me, there was Darcy.
Do we have any other nominees? Okay, with no other nominees, Linda, could you take a roll call, please?
With pleasure. Ms. Simorusti?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes, thanks, guys.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Woodward? Who? You're muted, but I saw you verbally say yes, Mr. Woodward. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. So Anne, congratulations. I'm looking forward to another year of working together. It worked really well, and it will work well again. So again, thank you. Thank you for doing it, and.
Oh, well, thanks to you too, and thanks to everybody. Looking forward to it.
So, um, Linda, there's the discussion, item number nine, discussion of and signing of the Code of Ethics, Conflict of Interest, and Code of Conduct for Remote Meetings. Is this something you want to conduct?
Um, I can just briefly touch on it. You are all seasoned board members, and so you have all been provided with the Code of Ethics and the Conflict of Interest, um, information in the past. As you know, these two documents help to guide the board members on their performance. A little bit of the do's and don'ts helps you to know where your boundaries are and how to conduct yourselves. The new item is the Code of Conduct for Remote Meetings. I would ask that you read through all three documents, two to refresh yourselves and one to read a document that you may or may not have read before, which I think you all have. And again, this is a code of conduct for remote meetings. It kind of is self-explanatory. And I, there is a form in the board drive for you to acknowledge receipt of these, of the Code of Conduct and Conflict of Interest. If you could print them out, sign them and send them to me, email them to me, I would appreciate that. We need to keep them on file. Um, so I, I think that's all that really needs to be said. Dr. Taylor, did you want to add anything?
No, not at all. I do thank the board for being so respectful and above board at all times since I've been here for five years, so thank you for that. I'm fortunate. It's not always the case.
Oh, Mr. Roslevich has joined us.
I was just gonna say that Rob is here. Can we, can, can we swear, Rob, in, please?
Yes, we certainly can. I would, I would be very happy to do so. Mr. Roslevich, I'm going to go back to the oath of office, which is in your board drive. Do you want Mr. Dr. Taylor to put it on the screen for you, or do you have access to it?
I should have access to it. I'm just wondering which way will be faster for everyone.
Scott, could you get it up again, the, the screen? There it is.
There you go.
Perfect.
So, um, Rob, if you could repeat after me?
Absolutely.
Okay, I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I do affirm.
Into the governments established in the United States.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I had to, I had to minimize my screen for a moment to, to get your, your time in.
Uh, so where was it?
Okay, um.
Second paragraph after United States.
Yeah, and this state under authority of the people.
And this state under authority of the people.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications.
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education.
Prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
Pursuant to RS nineteen colon four dash one.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense.
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense.
Listed in NJSA eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Listed in nineteen, and listed in NJSA eighteen A colon twelve dash one.
Thank you very much. And, um, I don't know if you heard me mention, um, earlier. If you can print out the oath and sign it, email it back to me, I will sign it and email it back to you.
Will do.
Thank you so much. Welcome back to the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on. We're up to number ten. I just wanted to make one brief comment before number ten, which is that we did have one communications. It did not come to the board address. It came to individual board members, Linda. Maybe we could put it on next time's agenda, Mr. Pollak.
Yeah.
Heard that. I wanted the rest of the board to know. I guess I've only spoken to a few people that the lights, and it was a letter about taxes and saving money, and part of that was about the lights at the high school athletic field and other lights in the system. Those are all emergency lights. The lights at the high school are emergency lights used in, in an area that we share, share the costs with the town so that, um, they're emergency for safety and security and to prevent vandalism and theft. And again, we share that, and use of the track in other parts of the field are day and night. So we, we share that with the town, and it's a modest set of costs, but we probably save money in the long term. So I just wanted to say that, and I can perhaps say more next time. So on to item ten. So I'm gonna move through these rather quickly. Everyone has had a chance to see them. Items ten through, um, fifteen. And then we'll go on to the, uh, very, uh, short agenda. So item ten is approval of the annual board meeting calendar, which you've had in the board, uh, board drive. Um, and I moved that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve the annual board meeting calendar for the twenty twenty-one board year as, as attached. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was, that was Anne, I think, first, and do we have any discussion? Any comments, please? Okay, uh, Linda, could we have a vote on that, please?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item eleven, delegate and alternate to the NJ School Boards Association. I, I, I believe these are the appointments that are gonna carry over from last year. Correct me if they are not. I moved that the Board of Education elect Darcy as a delegate and Michelle as the alternate delegate to the New Jersey School Boards Association for the twenty twenty-one, uh, board year. And, um, do I have a second? Thank you, Monique. Uh, any discussion? Okay, let's, let's vote.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, on to number twelve, delegate and alternate to the Middlesex County School Boards Association. Again, um, check, check my work, please, folks. I moved that the Board of Education elect Michelle as delegate and Rob, uh, Rob Roslevich as the alternate delegate to the Middlesex County School Boards Association for the twenty twenty-one school year. Do I have a second?
Second.
Linda, could you call the roll? Oh, discussion, excuse me. Is it any discussion? Okay, let's wait for Linda and then we can vote. Do you have an ornery dog there?
Me?
Yes.
No, no, why? No, I had to get another piece of paper. Okay, Mr. Marusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item thirteen are a series of resolutions. Uh, this is around rules, regulations, policies, et cetera. I moved that the Board of Education approve the following resolutions. Um, and since we've all had them and seen them, I'm just going to say A through L. So do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Linda, could we have the vote, please?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola? Yes? Uh, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
We read that.
Okay, on to number fourteen. So fourteen are all of our board appointments. I moved that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following appointments for the twenty twenty board year. Um, and this is A through EE, which I think are thirty different appointments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Linda, let's take a vote.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dina Cola?
Yes.
Ms. Pruce?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, number, number fifteen. Um, under president report are all of the appointments. So I went through the appointments, and Linda, if you need the list, I've made a, I've made a, I scanned a document and I can mail it to you.
Oh, thank you.
All the listings out, so you don't have to write it out or whatever.
Okay.
Um, so you save you some time. What I've done is I've kept all of the appointments exactly as they were this past year with one exception on the regular committees, which is I've added one person in consultation with Anne, one person to the negotiations committee. Um, and that will be Marilyn. So we will have five members of the committee. Um, but we have two serious multi-year negotiations about to start this spring. We have the HPAA and the HPEA negotiations. And so I, I'm hoping and thinking with five of us, we could always have three or four members there. And so that, I'm sorry, that committee would be, um, my, myself chairing, Anne, Rob, Roslevich, Michelle, and Marilyn. And we all have no conflicts. So with that said, and the other change will be a numbers twenty and twenty-one liaison to commission on refugee affairs and liaison to equity commission. Uh, since they are new and we have no evidence of any meetings, uh, we've done, we did that on a rotational, or maybe if they have a meeting, someone will get selected basis, and I've left those open under the label rotation, which is what we did last year. So with that all said, um, I'd like to move those. I'd like to move item.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready.
It's not necessary to have a vote.
Oh, no vote on these. Oh, of course, great. So let's move on.
Mark?
Yes.
I just want to remind you, for the HPAA negotiations, I don't think anybody is conflicted. So if you ever run into a problem, like I did that.
You did do it.
Years ago. I'm conflicted for HPEA, but not for HPEA, so.
If, if you or others who are conflicted or interested in that, we have had a, a, a small group. Um, I'd love to have four people at our meetings, uh, which would be equivalent to the, the parties we're negotiating with that don't have any regulations stipulating how many people can come. So if you're interested, um, just drop me a note or. come. So if you're interested, just drop me a note or shake your head now. I'll I'll but let me know and.
I'm good, but I just wanted to point out that we have far less folks who are conflicted.
Thank you.
We shouldn't have for the other.
Thank you.
I am still conflicted. I would love to do something. I can't. I'm out.
Okay, all right.
Mark, one more. Mark, sorry, one more thing. I had my hand raised, but one more note about the Equity Commission.
Yes.
It's no, you know, it's no longer a commission. It's technically now the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council. Um, so meetings are still public, from what I understand, and still volunteer based group, but the exact formation or has changed. So it's not technically a commission.
I had I had seen that, but I didn't see if they had met. I looked it up before I compiled this.
Yeah, and I, to my knowledge, they have not, but I could be wrong. So, um, yeah, I don't think they have, but I could be wrong. I think they were still kind of comprising the council.
Um, okay, I'll put it on a list. Oh, go ahead, Ann.
I was just gonna say, do you want me to email Gail and ask her to let us know when the meetings happen?
That would be wonderful. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Cool, sure.
Thank you. That's great. Um, okay, so, um, we have a very brief committee report recommendation and one action, excuse me, two action items under personnel. So briefly, if we could go through the committees first, including a discussion of item C on personnel, and then get public comment and then vote as usual. We'll have one set of votes, two votes in personnel. So Michelle, do you have anything at all to report from curriculum? Any meetings or anything going on yet? You're muted. You're muted, Michelle.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Um, we have a meeting scheduled for the 20th of January.
Okay.
So that working forward to discussing, continuing the conversation on assessment and grading. And I think that's such a major conversation that that's that's all we have looking forward right now.
Okay. Great, thank you. I have I have nothing new to report under finance and won't until the next meeting. And do you want to discuss any personnel and specifically the two action items?
Uh, yes. Number one, and they're both self explanatory, but we should certainly discuss. Number one is an employee. Scott, I believe this is the employee that was in a difficult situation, correct?
Correct.
Who is not paid very much anyway. And so we're agreeing to a brief period when the employee will be paid while she's out. And Scott, I think you assured us that the union was on board with this, and there was no sort of prospect of, I don't know, litigation over other people wanting.
Correct. We followed the contract to the letter of the law.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, we were careful about that. And this will be the third such request since I've been here in the last five years by an employee.
I'm sorry, I didn't actually realize it was in the contract. Okay.
Yeah.
We did offer, excuse me, we did offer a little bit more in this case than than we had to, a very small amount more, given the circumstances and the length of service of the employee when we discussed it.
Um, okay, so that's what that is. Schedule B appointments, coaching. I think, did everybody get Scott's email? I think that was to everyone, Scott, right? Where you laid out the hours, the different coaches are, okay. And if games wind up being canceled, in other words, if formal competition doesn't happen, what what will these coaches be doing to make up those hours?
They'll continue virtual training. That's going to happen regardless, and that is.
Okay.
Put in writing to me and Craig Coordinator.
Okay. I mean, I assume that sometimes things could happen outdoors rather than virtually, you know, at the discretion of the coaches. Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's the hope. I'll clarify for some of the board members who may have concerns about the way we're handling this round of coaching approval versus the way we did it back in the fall. We were really going down a path we had no idea about back in late summer, in August, when we had to approve fall sports. We didn't know what was going to happen, what it's going to look like. We have a better handle now on what we would do if competition didn't run, and that is to continue running virtual training. So that's why I'm recommending that we pay the full stipend. The coaches will be working for the entire period that they would have worked last year.
Scott, will you be separately recommending that CARES money be spent for some informal?
Yes, thank you.
Outdoor activists.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up this morning, which was the first day back. Today's the first day back, of course, since break. I advertised for folks who were interested in applying for positions to facilitate outdoor activities with the kids. And we would use CARES funding, federal grant money to to provide compensation for these individuals at a rate of $48 an hour, to contractual rate for doing this kind of activity. So far, I've had three people already, just one day of having put the posting out. Sign up. Two are PE teachers.
Great.
At the middle high school, and one is a one to the ESL teacher. So actually, what we'll be doing is running for, at this juncture, my recommendation would be to the board on the January 25th agenda, to pay for individuals to run outdoor activities, the three who are applying currently, and then one who actually expressed interest in running a kickball tournament for kids over a span of weeks. This is before I even put the posting out.
I wonder if any of that can happen before January 25th. Wait, sorry, Rob, why don't you go ahead?
I I'm sorry, I didn't.
I've been blabbing.
I didn't put my blue hand up. I didn't put my. I think they're yellow now, with the latest update. Uh, so that's middle and high school. And is there a program that's being planned for the littler kids or no? I I haven't gone there yet. I mean, I could. My emphasis has been on trying to do something for the kids who we've been keeping home for the longest period of time. I'd like to see how it goes first round, and I'm obviously open to expanding. Yeah.
Scott, I know sometimes you you've asked the board to sort of preemptively or prospectively approve or give some indication that we will approve positions before the actual meeting. I don't know if this would be one of those times, so we don't have to wait until January 25th. I feel so terrible that we've taken such a long time to get this done. And, you know, I was a big pusher of this, and certainly I was not.
If, yeah, it's certainly something I can gauge from the board tomorrow, or we can have public discussion about it. But I certainly, I think these individuals are ready to go as soon as, I'd say, next week. I think this week would be a little rushed, but yeah. Otherwise, it was my plan to kick things off January 26th pending board program 25th.
Okay.
So Darcy and then Chris, in that order, had their hands up.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why I had my hand up. I wanted to be clear. Like, I think any objection that I raised at the last meeting had nothing to do with, you know, coaching stipends or, you know, not wanting the kids to get their normal, well, normal, you know, winter sports and those interactions. But to clarify what Ann was just bringing up, and I agree with Ann, the sooner that stuff can start, the better, the more kids we can get out and active and moving. So I would certainly be all for saying, if you can start it next week, or put the, I mean, can't we just say, like, throw it on there now? We'll vote on it now, you know? We approve four positions at $48 an hour for whatever and go.
Uh, how about then, if any board member has concerns, he, she, mention them to me by email tonight or tomorrow. But if I don't hear back from anybody, I can move forward.
I mean, should we actually do a motion like Darcy suggested? What do you think?
Well, I I mean, I I had the names of the individuals, and but I'm not prepared to actually tell you how many hours are each going to work.
I see, I see.
But but I mean, I can just tell you if you need more information.
But I mean, we always do lots of things, you know, up to 40 hours, or, you know, at $48 an hour, up to 40 hours or whatever, you know, even if you have a ballpark idea that it'll be, you know, about 40 hours, then we can approve that.
Could we approve the positions without the names if the people aren't ready to have their names publicly shared? I mean.
I I can, look, rest assured, I'll have this thing up and running next week, assuming the teachers are ready to go.
Okay.
As long as I don't hear back from anybody. I, Darcy, I'm concerned. I don't have enough information. You may be approving something very broad that might not be necessary if you're going to be retroactively giving me approval to do so anyway. So, yeah.
I would only ask if 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 there's any objections to this. I would hate you to go start going forward and have objections that we have to hash out at the January 25th meeting. So unless, and again, this is with CARES money, it is not budget money we would be using. Does are there, I mean, any, any, any objections? I hate to put people on the spot, but if not, I would say go forward with it, and we can put it on the agenda then. I mean, we could make something very broad with the understanding that we'll vote on it again in on the 25th. Is that is that of a concern? I mean, something like, I move, let me get some wording here. Second.
Preliminary approval.
Looking for a motion.
I mean.
Here we go. I moved that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a an outdoor intramural sports program for up to 40 hours per for for staff members at $48 an hour to be final with final approval on January 25th.
Using the gap code that we use for CARES funds.
Yes, to be to be paid for with gap with CARES funds. Is 40 hours an appropriate amount?
Yes, proportion.
Why don't we do that? Who will second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's cleaner. Thank you, everyone. It's much cleaner.
Who was the second?
Uh, three or four.
Okay.
Let's see, I heard her first.
I'm sorry.
Chris, you wanted to speak. I will get to you in a moment.
Was it about the stipends, not about the?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I thought maybe. Could, do we have any other discussion? Otherwise, we can vote.
Well, did Chris want to talk about the stipends now or after? Was it about that?
We'll vote on this new motion first.
Oh, I thought we were going to vote. We haven't voted on any personnel motions yet. Do you want to vote on them all together?
Actually, we can't vote yet because we have to have public comment. So, Chris, why don't you speak? If there's no more discussion about the extracurricular, the the intramurals, Chris, why don't you bring up your thoughts about the stipends? And then after public comment, we'll vote on the three. There'll be three personnel items, not two.
Yeah. So, you know, I think it's great that the intramurals are going forward. So thank you for organizing that with people that, Scott, and those people that were involved. About about the stipends, I mean, I just don't think anybody has really an idea of what's going to happen. I mean, I don't have a concern. I mean, we have, we have an excellent coaching staff, and I'm sure they're going to try and involve the kids as much as they can. But, you know, if if, you know, practices, indoor practices are not allowed, if outdoor practices are either not allowed or just impossible because of the weather, you know, then then you're down to, you know, virtual workouts. And I just can't see virtual workouts being the same level of time commitment as a regular coaching position, which involves, you know, lengthy practices every day as well as the competitions. So, you know, I'd rather see us do as something like in the fall where it's prorated depending on what athlete.
Well, the virtual, virtual practices are happening as we speak. So that's not going to change.
But for the CARES money, the CARES.
No, I'm just talking about the stipends now.
Intramural stipends.
No, no, the regular stipends, Ann.
For the, I thought he was talking about intramurals.
No, no.
No?
This is talking about the the.
Schedule B.
Oh, I see. Oh, I thought that was clear. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The indoor.
Apologies.
Sports. I mean, so, you know, in terms of how much time that takes for the coaches, you know, I'm willing to pay for whatever happens, really. But I have a concern about whether, I mean, kids are not going to want to do three hour virtual workouts, you know? And in some cases, you know, for the track coaches, you know, you specify, you know, a length of run they're supposed to do, and you send them off. I mean, that's not the same thing as having a track practice. So I'm willing to pay for whatever happens, but I have doubts about whether what, you know, it could be that under the various scenarios, what happens is just not comparable to a regular, the time commitment involved in a regular coaching position.
Well, Chris, I I don't, I don't feel the same. I think, as you know, I think, I think that it might be a little bit less, but it might be also the same and much more difficult for the coaches. And so anything we can do for the for the students, which we can't know in advance, I think it's very unlikely that we're going to come back with indoor sports programs. But to run outdoor practices, to run virtual practices, to even run scrimmages between members of the basketball team, let's say, outside, or have the track team not running in competition but running against each other, anything to get the kids doing stuff, and the money, the money, we might pay a bit too much, but I'm willing to take that risk. So, Rob?
Can I just add to that, that to keep in mind that the staff members, the coaches, are making a commitment to be available at those times, all the way through that period of time. And so to say to them, partway through, or, you know, hey, you only work this amount of hours or whatever, I'm not sure that that is, you know, fair to be to them. And and I, the overall, the overall issue is making sure we're covered, making sure that we have the coaches, making sure that the kids can be properly supervised and coached at whatever level we can make that happen.
Ann?
I tend to agree with Rob, and I also I also have concerns that if we were to go and try to make the coaching stipends into hourly, you know, based on actual hours, we'd have to go back and renegotiate with the union. And at a certain point, we're just not going to have time to, you know, pay people. And I don't think we would get that done in less than, you know, three, four weeks.
I wanted to add that this would be a tricky issue in in the contract. And I don't want tricky issues in the contract, just when we're going into negotiations, which were put off last year, you know, with a quick kind of a one year rollover contract, because no one was used to doing this after COVID-19 hit us. This year, we have to do almost certainly a three year contract, and almost certainly the same with the HPAA. And I don't want to have this kind of a negotiation going on now. So I would, I would urge urge us all to to vote positively on this. I think it's it's money worthwhile and worth spending. Okay, let me go through the other committees, and then a public comment, and then we'll take a vote on 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 these items, one, two, and then the new item, three on intramurals. So policies and regulations. Darcy, do you have anything to report?
Just that in those meetings, when we all have our committee meetings a week before the January 25th board meeting, I'm hoping that Personnel and Equity and Excellence and Curriculum and Instruction can take a look at those policies that pertain to their committees. And Scott's invited me to those meetings so that I can hop on if there are any questions, so that for that January 25th meeting, hopefully, we can just bang these out.
Great. Great, thank you. Monique, anything to report on Equity and Excellence?
No updates. We will be meeting before that January 25th meeting, and we look forward to having Darcy join us.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I think it's time for public comment. And so, here it is. So the Board of the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved. Here it is. So the Board of, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. So if any of the members of the public here want to speak, just raise your virtual hand or turn your camera on and raise your hand and you will get the floor. Okay, seeing no hands. I'm going to go on then to the Board Action Items, which is voting on the personnel issues listed one, two and item three as we devised it during the meeting. So Anne, could you move those?
I'd like to move personnel one, two and new three.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
I tried. I was muted.
I know a lot of people muted. I saw lips moving. Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Board members, please unmute your, your, Simarasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gallin?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola? Ms. McFadden? Yes, okay. Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Roslevich, would you please unmute yourself?
Yeah, I was hitting the button. It wasn't working. Yes, sorry about that.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes, on one, no on two.
And, and three, please?
Yes.
That's the intramurals. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Mark, I just want to thank the board very much for being so supportive of the idea to move forward on the intramurals. I know the teachers will be excited about that. I'll make sure I jump on that right away. And I, and I will contact the employee who you are providing support for tonight by phone. And let her know that you were very gracious as well about that. Thank you.
Well, thanks to those employees too who volunteered on the intramurals. That's fantastic. Really appreciate it.
One of them is, I, I don't mind sharing because we're at this point now, we're sure you're going to see the name anyway. Rich McGlynn is.
Oh, good.
Yeah, who, who are very popular individual by, you know, I think will bring out a lot of kids.
That's great.
So. Number 19, old business. And since the president's report with all those appointments, and I didn't want to kind of get in the way of myself, I have one very quick item. And then I'll open it to the rest of the board if, if that's okay. So here goes. I'm going to try to share. Whoops. That didn't work exactly right. So let me share my screen. And share this. And then, okay, whoops. No.
Got it.
Not. Is it, is it coming up? Oh, there it goes. Great.
I've got some other version of it. I'll ask him.
So. Whoop. So I wanted to give a couple of brief comments to any of the public who's here or who sees this. In the future. I think people don't really know.
Trying to find out who that is.
The Highland Park District is making COVID-19 tests available. Students, staff, faculty, administrators, parents are guardians free of charge. By the way, that includes board members and I assume our families. I, I haven't been tested for COVID-19. I've had antibody tests and I, I didn't have it. So Tuesdays, 2 to 5 PM, Bartle Gym, enter from the back parking lot. And there's a, there's a link here, which I think Dr. Taylor is going to put on the website. This is a, an entry form to get your test. So anyone who needs to test, you see this on social media all the time. I need a test. I need a test. Here's a place for people associated in any way remotely with the school system to, or not remotely to get a test. And then I wanted to just, also, we've heard and seen on social media, folks asking the question. When we're keeping the schools remote because of the numbers in the community, which is part of our reentry plan. Do you know where the, where the disease is? Who has it? Is it members of the school community? And as it turns out, that's not the CDC or the New Jersey Department of Health guidelines, which are to use community spread in your community as the primary indicator. Indicator of remote versus in-person schools. And that's exactly what we're doing. And our secondary indicator is when the schools are hybrid or open, how many people in the school district have, have enough people gotten sick within the school system? So they carry it over and there might be an outbreak. So we shut schools or shut classrooms or shut the whole system and go completely remote. So we have a plan and it does use community spread. So if, again, anyone is listening. We, we don't have a, a large number of the public here tonight, but if anyone is listening and that has been questioned, why are you using community spread as an indicator? It's because we're following the CDC and the Department of Health, the State Department of Health's guidance. And we don't want a situation which has happened in some countries. Now, I always say this early on in the COVID-19. Israel, Singapore, South Korea, they all had a good path. Things were going well, which they're not going so well now here or there. But they had a very good path and then the schools were open. They didn't take into account community spread and they had pretty disastrous results. So we're following that. And anyone who didn't hear, the United Kingdom, well, England and Scotland. Boris Johnson has closed the school systems there and has pretty much locked down the whole country. And so it is what's happening in the world now. It's a terrible situation. And better, as I always say, in the situation, better safe than sorry. And the guidelines are also here, the cdc.gov coronavirus link. Chris, thank you for this. This is the indication. And we need to heed it. And thanks to Scott and to the committees that met in coming up with our discreet criteria for number of community cases when closing or not closing. So with that.
I posted the test registration link. It's on the main page. As soon as you go to the front page.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any old business to discuss? Any new business? Okay, so last public comment period, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board Policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. Does anyone in the public want to speak? Okay, with no one raising their hands, I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? See you all. Thank you. See you all later.
Thanks.